I'd like to call it over this regularly scheduled session of the Vienna Utility Board for August the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Let the record reflect that. We have a quorum this afternoon, but we are missing two of our members. Having a quorum, we will proceed, though. The minutes from the July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three meeting have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? And no objections, and the minutes will stand approved as posted. First item on our agenda this afternoon would be the water quality testing. Craig?
Uh, latest report, last report we received is good. Um, we have not received one for this current month, but it should, usually comes about day, like, they'll probably here Monday, so.
And they did do a filter change out?
They did do a carbon change out, seven and eight, so they went well.
Yep.
Uh, the D E P, EPA is in town doing some testing on their mining wells, so if we get the results back also.
Do we have, um, a map of all of those monitoring wells?
We do.
I'm telling you, I don't know how many there are, but it must be twenty. They're everywhere doing that.
Yeah. I did speak to them, but their monitoring well in that parking lot at the church too, yeah. A right, a right away is to the left of that, about thirty feet as you're looking in the parking lot from the church.
I've looked at the city maps because when you and I went down there and looked at it, there is what I would consider to be an alleyway
Right.
right up next to the back of the Masonic. Um, is that the one you're referring to?
I am.
Okay.
I talked to him about possibly raising that one up, and he's looking at it, so. We did have to do some grade changes on our monitoring wells, uh, just for, because we did some asphalt work and dirt work. All of them have been corrected except the one, so.
Yes. And I haven't seen, the testing that's being done is for the plume. It's not for P F O S, it's for the, it's for the plume. And I have not seen his results, so we'll have to, more than likely, we'll have to reach out to
He did inform me the A R testing for P F O S too.
They're doing that, but that's not us.
That's not us.
I mean, we, we're testing.
Nice to see you, what?
Yeah, comparison, okay. Any other questions on water quality testing? All right. Uh, the A R P discussion. So, we, uh, have the money allocated from our A R P funds for the projects that we've already approved. And, uh, as it stands right now, there's nothing else that I'm aware of uh, project-wise, uh, that's in the, in the pipeline. Um, I'm trying to convince council to take the remainder of the money and use it for the swimming pool project, and so we will see how that goes, but at any rate, um, are there any questions on the A R P funds?
So we have to have this now, um, several, several
Yes.
All of them, it has to be allocated, it has to be spent by the several
Correct. So, yeah. I don't think that'll be a problem. Yeah, the list, the list is long. Yeah.
So, how much money is left in it? How much money have we not?
One point one not out.
One point one, okay.
Might be a few dollars, but it's
Sure, but appreciate that, thank you.
The rest of the money is set aside for the
For other projects.
Yes. Authorized already, so it's, it's locked in there, we're not Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we move on to the five-year plan. Um, and I, it's funny, I didn't think about it till just now. I received a, uh, email today from the W V U people. Uh, the ten-year plan is for, up for review right now. They finally completed it, and so I didn't get a chance today to look at it because we had other meetings and stuff, but um, if there's anything that you want on this five-year plan, uh, now is the time to do it because we're going to attach this five-year plan to the ten-year plan for the city and include it as one of the documents in that, so if there's anything that you see on the radar in the next five years, um, or even for that matter, for the next ten years, uh, it needs to be documented here. Not that we can't add to it because this is a living document, but, um, I personally will be absolutely thrilled to death when we get that ten-year plan done, uh, because it'll be the last one I'll ever do, I can tell you that. And it won't be done again for ten more years, so that will be good, so.
I have a question about that, first of all. I was just looking over this. First of all, can I get a physical copy of, because I had one for the old one, because it's hard to compare on these screens. But, oh, thanks, Mary. Um, I, if I'm not mistaken, and Craig, you can tell me if I'm wrong. Um, some of these things, uh, like water system improvement, like phase one and phase two, um, that includes like wells nine and ten and, you know, all the rehabilitation of the wells that, that's kind of got put in there all in, under that. Is, am I, am I correct in that?
Yeah, and the line upgrades from like inch and quarter galvanized up to
Okay.
Tristover, so.
And same with the, the sewer phases. I think phase two includes, um, the forest hills that we've talked about.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure they were on there and I wasn't missing anything. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Now, Craig, how about an update on the Forty-Fifth Place Water Line?
Yeah. Okay, um, all the taps, the, the new line of water line is in place. We are currently using new water line, um, both Forty-Fifth Place and Fourth Avenue. The old line has been disconnected and abandoned. All the taps are made, crossed over. Uh, we're at the point now where they should be coming back in and starting to replace the concrete roadways. There's an issue with the contractors and our bid specs. He's indicating that he did not fill the curb. When we, our new bid specs called for a complete road replacement, you know, not just a cut joint from the center line over to the curb, he indicated there was, he didn't feel the curbs was included when he bid. He has asked for additional money for the curb of eighty-one thousand some dollars. I, I have flat denied it. I don't feel it that way, so I told him that he should, uh, cut that curb, straight line down from the face of curb down and replace the roadway. And if there's any damage done to curb by doing it, then he should replace it. Uh, with our contractor through our concrete work, streets, our estimated cost to replace that curb is a little over twenty thousand dollars, so eighty-one thousand is just too extreme. So, so he should be moving in, replacing the street soon. I, I know he's running out of time here shortly, so, uh, we will look at damages if he does extend the time.
So I looked at that, they've marked it now, and they have the concrete cutter sitting there, okay? Do you have, what, what degree of confidence do you have that when they put that new street in, that the old curbing will be satisfactory?
If they don't damage, it'll be fine.
So there's not going to be any connection between the curbing and the street? Okay.
Eighty-one thousand dollars is too
I'm not talking about the money. I understand perfectly, I really do, okay? But I'm going to guarantee you that as that concrete street settles, there are going to be low spots, there's going to be gaps between that curb. I mean
Well, the gaps required for massive car to be put in place, so, uh, the curb should not settle. Um, I don't see how they can remove the street without damaging the curb, so, but we'll look at that when it happens.
And so what was the verdict on Forty-Fifth Place as far as the curbing on it?
Well, there's a roll curbing on Forty-Fifth Place, so they'll cut into the roll, lower part of the toe slope of the roll.
And are they going to repair the two or three spots on the left-hand side at the same time, or are we going to come back in?
No, I'll wait till they move out, and then our contractor will come in on the left-hand side and repair the street for Mr. Uh, Florence.
And what about the storm drains that have the
We adjust at that time.
That's on us too, or them?
Us.
Us, okay. I don't remember what the total cost to do was. Forty-five? And the one draw that they've taken was for a hundred and, okay, I was gonna say one. Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on, uh, Forty-Fifth Place?
No.
All right. Fourth Street Lift Station. Did you write him the nasty letter and tell him to get on the ball?
Well, I talked to Mike this morning, I just gave him information, I did receive a letter from their bonding agency, and it appeared that their bonding of that project is expired in August because they're wanting to know how they did and how they finished up, and I don't know, you haven't started yet, I didn't tell you how you finished. So, uh, Mike will get a hold of them, they're going to issue new bond to us for that particular project.
Mike, is there any reason why we have to use these people?
If, if you want that pump. Yeah, I mean, they're the, the rep for
So we buy the pumps, we'll find somebody else to put the piping in, Jimmy, they're terrible.
Yes, piping should be all done, they've measured like twenty times this past few months. They said the piping and everything was done.
I thought that was the issue, what's the holdup?
I don't know. I haven't heard.
It was they, because I think at the last meeting, they said they were ready and were measuring, and I thought they'd be with that, I thought it was within a week or something, they said they're gonna be here, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misheard you. I thought you told me we were backed up again for nine more months.
Yeah.
So, we're moving closer?
Yeah, I thought that for a while, but, yeah. They, they have pumps in stock, the, the piping is supposed to be done. They've measured it, everything's good, they're just have to move up and start installing pumping system, new pumps, so.
Okay. How many years has this been now? Two?
Over, about a year, actually it's a year, yeah, in July, so.
Wow. Okay.
Which is, you know, I know pumps take a long, that was the biggest delay, and we took the pumps in before they designed the piping, you measure piping, all that stuff. They're indicating what they're telling us, that everything's done, but they just haven't installed it, so.
Mike, you, you know, are we gonna have to do anything differently to our lift station when we start the project for the new trunk line to Pencersburg? I mean, the discharge hookup ought to be the same, and
Yeah, yeah, you're just, yeah, you won't do anything inside.
Did you raise your hand to say something? I'm sorry.
Just waving, Russ.
I thought she was swatting a fly. Jeez.
Very big fly.
Hey, hey.
Right here. For the young lady in the back, this is our city attorney, Mr. Always On Time.
Um, yeah, I called.
Yes, you did, I called him. Yes, you did. All right. So let's go to the, uh, water and wastewater system improvements project.
No update.
No update, all right. The dredging of pond run and the dry dams.
Uh, stairway, hopefully funding source come through. I did meet with the soil conservation department this past month. Uh, talked to them about the maintenance upon run and the dry dam structure, kind of, uh, there's been some changes in their policies, the way they do things. Uh, what we're doing now is instead of paying them a yearly fee and they match it and pay us back because we mow it, uh, they're doing away with that. Uh, they wanted to charge us a yearly fee. Uh, I think we worked out a deal where their yearly fee only includes mowing channel and the dry dam structure one time a year, and I told them that was unacceptable to be on residents, and, um, kind of corporation on that area is that it would need to be mowed at least twice a year, sometimes three times a year, it all depends what kind of rain we get. Uh, so they agreed to come in and they would mow the dry, or the pit, dam itself, the dry dam, and we would mow pond run and the surrounding fields around the dry dam. Um, and it'd be kind of a wash. I would, I would not pay them anything, and they would not pay us anything.
For years, we've been under the assumption that there was a stockpile of money that we had been paying into, and unfortunately, that money went to, went into a statewide pool for various projects, and so that stockpile that we thought that we had earmarked for us does not exist, so we're not going to be able to get those funds. And they promised us a mower, and so we're not going to get that mower since they're going to mow the ba, the dam bank.
Yeah, actually, they're, they have, have their own crews on hand, um, soil conservation department does, so they don't know. One thing about the dry dam structures and dam structures they maintain, which they, they rattled off some areas that they have dam structures in, I didn't, I did not know. Several in Richmond, I didn't know there's even any lakes out there, but one they did mention Tracy Lake, which, which you're familiar with, right?
Tracy Lake? I'm sorry, I
Huh? Outside Pensbury. It's one of their structures, and I, I did not know that, so, that's where they, they stockpiled. They have big issues, they got a little campground, nice, nice lake. So I didn't know it was one of their structures, but, you know, what they indicated to me was, um, a lot of these little communities, um, Pullman, for one, uh, did not have money to maintain their dry dam structures, so that's where that money went to, so. I mean, Pullman's got about three people in the town, or
How many?
Yeah, so.
Would you like an interesting fact?
What's that?
The racetrack at Pensbury that has been dormant for so long is now being brought back to life. Dale Earnhardt Junior is one of the guys involved in that project. I think that's cool as can be.
Yeah.
All right.
Substantially smaller, I see.
Yes, but who cares?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna run, start running a short one and make the big one. You have to get permits. Yeah.
Imagine.
Yeah, imagine that. You have to get permits.
You have to get permits.
Yeah. Dale Earnhardt Junior was in Pensbury.
Have you seen his special on that, that track?
Yeah, who, Dale Earnhardt?
Yeah, it's on Peacock.
It's on who?
Peacock, that's where the string is. Excellent show, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was about abandoned racetracks and their history. He did one in Pensbury.
You know, it's funny, I, I remember Pensbury from years ago, but I never went.
Neither.
But I, I'm, from what I understand, it was huge.
That's what he was saying.
They paid what, fifty thousand dollars to win back in the
Back in the day.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand dollar, the big one. There was a thirty thousand dollar, yeah, which in nineteen eighty-two was
Yeah, and a lot of the NASCAR guys race up there.
I can't imagine racing that track across them bridges, one of them bridges. Yeah.
Yeah.
Nope.
All right, so we move on. Uh, Russell, you have any questions about the, we went over so far? Yeah. So, uh, Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements, Phase One?
Uh, after the last meeting, you know, we had talked about the possibility of, uh, applying for some money through the, uh, the more S R F program. Uh, if you look, and I don't know if everyone has the information provided, but, uh, there is a part in there of the stormwater greened infrastructure. They do, they will provide, you know, it's not economically driven, um, you can get up to half the project cost or five hundred thousand dollars, whichever is less, uh, if you do green projects. And this would qualify because we're doing, uh, the perforated pipes, we're putting, recharging the groundwater as we go. So at least that section from basically pond run, yeah, yeah, that would be eligible for. The issue would be, it, the earliest you could have the money is July first. And I know we're gonna be tight, that would be extremely tight to get that done before school starts this year.
So, they'd pay half of, we start after July first?
Yeah.
We might wait a year.
Maybe another year, yes, it'll be twenty-five.
Right. Half us chuck money.
So it's a state revolving fund grant?
Yes.
How long is the process on that? I mean, if we applied today, six months, how long?
You'll apply. Uh, applications are due usually the first of the year, they retake, and then you'll be eligible starting the next July, so everything comes July first. Uh, they usually don't have the, especially for the, the grant money, not very many people use it, so it's usually pretty easy.
So is this a P S C decision, or is it some other government agency?
It's all through D P.
Okay. So do we need to get Tony Tiano to get us some information on this particular grant, or does that come under you, Mike?
Uh, we can do it, but what, what we'll do is you just put an application in and, uh, it, it's pretty simple. It's not, it's first come, first served, so it doesn't
Yeah, but those pots of money right now are very huge. Okay, so if we can get in it, but we've also engaged John Stump for another project. We need John's help with any of that, because last time, John was with us when we went to Charleston for the water tanks and
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would be the other part, you'd have to have some kind of financing. Uh, I'm not sure how you would finance the rest of, you know, if you would even say it's a million-dollar project, you got five hundred thousand dollar grant, where's the other five hundred thousand dollars coming? And if, we'd have to borrow it, then, you know, you could borrow it through the same program.
Well, we'll talk about, we'll talk about that in a minute, then.
Yes.
All right.
I just wanted to throw that out.
Well, so let's get the application, and let's see how involved it is.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, they're not, I mean, we, it takes probably half an hour.
And who would be leading us through that? You? Okay. All right, well, let's see, well, let's look at it. Okay. Amy, try to remind me to ask John about that, see if he's familiar with that. Okay. Um, lead service line inventory.
We had a meeting this week with Mike and Lori and myself. Uh, I sat down, went through some dates, so when our next meeting is on a monthly basis, we had kind of outlined what should be done and, uh, what we need to be working on, so. Where did you forward that to them, or did you forward the dates on that? Did the, you put a drop box for everybody?
No.
Pardon? Yeah. It just kind of outlines, like, days of the month that we're going to meet for next year until the final report's due on October sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, so. We're ahead of the game, so.
Okay.
We're just starting on mapping, uh, yeah, Ezra programs still working, we still get a lot of data. We go upstairs, another questionnaire. The people, uh, kind of, asking for their assistance again, what type of lines they have, that kind of thing, so. Yeah, yeah, the other four thousand two hundred people, so. Five thousand, so.
Okay, well, just send that in, schedule that if you will. So we go to the skater system.
Uh, rough draft of that, they just made proposal of what we're going to be bidding out. Yeah, I, I don't know, you put that in a drop box. Okay, it just outlines what what we're going to be bidding out and how the process is going to work, and, uh, this is for sewer and water. Water will leave as a radio base, and the sewer will switch over to, uh, a cellular base system. Be fourteen tow lift stations, I think there's ten, sewer and four in water, uh, stormwater, so. So it'll cover all of our stations. And I have some upgrades we have to do for the wellfields or booster stations, but it should be addressed in the I guess the point now is, uh, do we go ahead and start bidding this stuff out, and Mike work the bid specs up and go with it, or not, so.
Are you satisfied?
Yes.
And we won't know whether we can do it till we get an estimate. I mean, I see the three hundred twenty-four thousand there and two hundred and two hundred and forty, three sixty on the other one. And I can't be right. Where is it? Four fifty. Okay, so let's, I mean, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't, other than advertising, it doesn't cost anything to bid them.
Okay, well, engineering fees, we haven't, that's
Oh, he's on retainer. He's on retainer, Jimmy.
Yeah, the retainer's expensive, so, like lawyers, yeah. Let the engineer show up on time.
Oh, man. Mike was early, by the way.
Yeah, that's right.
Good, I'll, I'll just borrow some of his
Would your GPS say you were gonna be here ten minutes early? You need a new GPS.
Just lie to me, that's what.
All right.
Do we have to vote on that, or do you just say, yeah, we're gonna do it, then?
To go out to bid, I mean, we'll, we'll have to vote to accept the bid, but
I didn't know, because I knew there'd be some expenses.
Yeah, the, I, I guess the only thing that, you know, as I look through it, I don't know how you want to handle, um, you know, they're gonna get it, they're gonna install everything, they're gonna train the guys on how to use it, but then they walk, you know, from this, they walk away. So I don't know if we want, if that's something you will do afterwards, like any kind of maintenance, or if we want to put in there that you need to tell us, uh, annual cost for three years or something like that.
I think we should.
I would expect that a system manager would make a recommendation, but we'll wait and see if that comes.
I just did. It's in there, yeah. But I want to know what the, the cost is going to be for the next three years on that project, so, you know, maintenance, because we do need that. Just like any software that you use, you always have a maintenance agreement, so.
Okay. So, if our task order did not cover the engineering for the bid process?
It did.
Okay, all right. All right, so that concludes our unfinished business. Now we go to new business. Amy Roberts gets to go first.
So, um, I had found out some information, and I thought that more should be aware of it. We paid off our water fund refurbishment bond, uh, back in beginning of June, and the money that was placed in reserve for that bond is a hundred and thirteen thousand forty-nine dollars, and that is basically the water fund money. They came back to us. We would need to put that in water fund, because it's a lot of water fund for that reserve. Um, it's our money, it's earning five point one percent interest at the municipal bond commission. Uh, we could ask for it back, but at this point, uh, my recommendation would be to leave it there, and, um, the only other water fund bonds we had I didn't pay less than three percent interest on it, so we're already five point one percent reserve, and, um, plus three percent interest. So I wanted everybody to be prepared, that was the amount it is. On deposit there, it was our money, if there's something with the water fund, needed that money, um, it's, it's similar interest rate that the city's part of, and on half, so. But, you should be aware, you guys have it first. Something in that, you are prerogative, and, um, you can, you can, whatever.
Okay, so that's the reason why that Amy's here today is, we have a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that's at the state. Uh, the lady at the state said that some people leave their money in there for twenty years, because you're earning, you're earning interest on it. Now, if we Now, if we take it out, we're gonna put it back in the water fund because that's where it goes. But I, I don't personally care. Uh, we can get the money back anytime we need it. But on the other hand, you know, if you see it and it obviously looks better on our balance sheet, uh, cause we have an additional hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Okay, then it's there, so, all right. Um, but at any rate, um, John, any suggestions? Kim, any suggestions?
It's fine. It's totally reasonable.
You good leaving it there? All right, so just put that in the back of your mind. So the next time, you know, a hundred thirteen thousand dollars is?
If we would happen to go out for another water bond, we could then move that reserve, not have to fund that again.
Yes.
And, and so when you are fully funded of the reserve, it does make that debt ratio down by five percent. Where we have the debt ratio on bonds of a hundred and fifty percent that you pay, that you fully fund that, um, that, that reserve, then that percentage goes to one. So it, it is helpful, so. Let's move it to another project. That would be our current money.
Okay. All right, any other questions on that? Managers report.
Uh, just a few things. Uh, Tuesday, next week, we'll, uh, we will be replacing the electrical service into the booster station in Greenmont Hills. Current electrical service is deteriorated, it's corroded, it's underground. Been there for forty years, uh, meter set and the lines running into the pumps has to be replaced. We're doing it Tuesday, so in that area, Greenmont, there will be, people will be experiencing low water pressure. It will have water. But it'll just be, not be as much pressures as we're used to, so. I've sent out the notice, uh, it should be in the paper tomorrow. News, why isn't it made? You know, it's okay. That is that low water pressure will be from eight AM to approximately three thirty, or whenever we get the electrical service back up.
Do we have to involve the, uh, power company on that?
Yes. Yeah, they have to disconnect it, then we have to come back in, but they should be able to do it about the same time, cause he'll do all the work. He'll shut everything down, sign, and run all electrical work, so. Come out, we're gonna set a new meter pestle, they'll just change the wires over to do it and get back up and running. The cost of that, uh, estimated cost of that's approximately four thousand dollars.
I think I gave that to Teresa this morning to have her put it on Facebook, so. Hopefully we get that out there so people will know.
Uh, this month we will be making the, uh, water line extension through Longsdale Drive, uh, next to Spencer's Landing, over to the residents that requested water approximately a year and a half ago. Uh, we're setting two inch main line, then we'll be setting approximately seven meters off that main line. And supply those people with water in that area. Uh, we've been kinda waiting around for the DEP and EPA to come back with results of what might be in the water down there, and if it's something does. They did test it last month. If it does come back, they said that they might be able to help us out reimbursement of costs of that particular project, so they're not sure yet. But I really can't wait any longer. The people did request water and did make a formal request, so. We'll be doing that in-house. Uh, we are having materials and supplies on hand, so we didn't run no additional cost out of the budget, so.
So, I know that when the people on Ann's Drive have approached us several times about annexing into the city. And I forgot because somebody else called the other day and wanted to know about annexing into the city. And I told them that every person in that subdivision has to vote to annex in. You can't take, unless it's unanimous, you can't annex it, can you?
Well, it depends on how you're annexing it. Um, I think if you brought in the individual property owners, they could be brought in separately so long as they are contiguous to the city's boundaries. So if you have, I don't, if I remember right, Ann's Drive is a series of residences, correct?
Yes.
And they're all, they're individual lots?
Yes.
And my recollection is that the that the, uh, city boundary is parallel to the railroad track that runs there with, right?
Well, it ends at Twelfth Street.
And the sewer plant, right? So, you may, pragmatically speaking, the best way to do it is to have everybody do it. Um, but if you had to do it individually off top of head, you might have to do it in phases like this, cause you have to be contiguous.
Yeah, but, you know, the whole issue with that is if you take it, you know, these parts that are in the city would, you know, get their streets cleaned, the ones that don't. I mean, it, it, it just doesn't work very well.
Well, without getting into a terribly academic legal argument or a legal explanation, any parcel that comes in, uh, would have to come in has to be contiguous, period. The railroad track, uh, the law says that railroad tracks and rivers, if they are the boundary, then and they're not in the city, that doesn't matter. You can still bring them in. You can still bring in the adjacent property owners. Um, the problem, what's different from that to most of the ones that we've done is when we've brought in large parcels, they've been all one parcel, you know, one large parcel. You have groups of small parcels. And if I remember how Ann's Drive set up, there are houses on both sides of the street. One side of those houses would obviously be contiguous. I could make an argument for bringing in an entire subdivision, but if I do make the argument to bring in the entire subdivision, if it, I'm assuming it's a subdivision. Then you would have to have the property owners. You, in order to bring them all in together, they would have to be unanimous. If you wanted to bring them in, say there are seven on one side of the street, but only six wanna come in. Um, you could do the six voluntarily, not bring in, or, and you could you could force the seventh into the city. Um, you can, and you can do forced annexations. I don't think that's the best way to do it. Um, but I think you might have to do it in phases where you do one side of the street, the new boundary is where those houses are, then you do another annexation after the other side of the street. See what I mean?
And just for the record, the Ann's Drive area is not asking to be annexed. It was another group that didn't wanna be identified, so.
And I'm just using it as an example, as an example. Um, I don't know which group you're talking about. They, Ann's Drive has asked, has.
Okay, all right, thank you. What else, Craig?
That's it.
Um, any questions for Craig? All right. Amy, anything else? Lori? Michael? Last chance.
No, I'm good.
John?
No.
So I would like a vote. Okay, doesn't matter, I would like a vote. Did you think that this meeting was run more efficiently than the last meeting, or did you like the last meeting? All in favor of this meeting being really great and efficient, cause it's only thirty-seven minutes, where the last one took an hour? Just raise your hand.
If a conflict interests, I like abstain on this vote. I can step out if you want, so.
Oh, no, Russell, he tells me he's gonna be late and he says, oh, by the way, see if you can run the meeting as well as I do. He runs one meeting in ten years and it's like, oh, great.
Run as quickly as I did.
Ah, all right.
Still win. And you're down two guys, too.
Hey, they would've voted for me, buddy. All right. Mike, thanks for your work, buddy.
You're welcome.
All right. Meeting adjourned.